The relevant provisions of the Minneapolis City Charter and laws of the state of Minnesota. This is the day fixed for the assembling of the newly installed city council following the 2017 general municipal election, marking the beginning of the 2018-2021 term. The city council will be in order. The clerk will call the roll of members.
Councilmember Reich.
President.
Gordon.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Worsami.
President.
Goodman.
President.
Jenkins.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
President.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. The purpose of this first meeting is to organize the city council for the conduct of city business. This organizational meeting is convened pursuant to notice as required by law, which was included in the transition calendar adopted Friday, December 15, 2017. Matters to be transacted as part of this organizational meeting are listed on the agenda, which was first posted and made public on Wednesday, January 3, 2018. Printed copies of the agenda have been distributed to all members, and copies are available to the public as well. It's now in order for a motion to adopt the agenda as printed and distributed. May I have such a motion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as printed. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The agenda has been adopted. Members, the first item of business is the election of officers of this body, beginning with the position of president. In terms of procedure, I intend to administer the election for all four officers. We will begin by opening the floor for nominations. After all nominations have been made, we will proceed to take the vote by roll call. We will take a separate vote on each position in the order reflected on the agenda. Once the election of all four officers has been completed, we will briefly pause the proceedings to seat the new officers before taking up the remainder of the agenda. So, to recap, I will first open the floor for nominations for the office of president. Once those nominations have closed, we will take the vote. Voting will be done in the order in which nominations are made. The clerk will call the roll in numerical order by ward. That's the process we will follow for all four of the officer positions on the agenda. And once all four positions have been elected, we will briefly recess the meeting so that staff can reset all of the officers at the dais, and then we will proceed to the rest of the business on the adopted agenda. With that, the first office is the president, and without objection, I will open the floor to nominations. Are there any nominations for the office of president?
Mr. Clerk, I stand to nominate Councilmember Lisa Bender for the office of president.
Councilmember Bender, representing Ward 10, has been nominated to the office of president. Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, the period for nominations is now closed, and members, we will proceed to a vote on the motion to elect Lisa Bender, representing Ward 10, to the office of council president. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion carries unanimously, and Councilmember Bender, representing Ward 10, has been elected president of the city council. Congratulations. I'll now open the floor to nominations for the office of vice president. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Andrea Jenkins to be vice president of the Minneapolis City Council.
Councilmember Jenkins, representing Ward 8, has been nominated to the position of vice president. Are there further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, the period for nominations is closed, and members will proceed to a vote on the motion to elect Andrea Jenkins, representing Ward 8, to the office of council president. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion carries unanimously, and Councilmember Jenkins has been elected vice president. Congratulations, Councilmember Jenkins.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I would like to thank my colleagues deeply so much for the honor of electing me your president. I wondered, I will be speaking later in the meeting because I didn't speak this morning. I wondered if we might pause for a moment and see if Councilmember Jenkins would like to speak in this moment here, this historic moment of being elected the vice president of the city council.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of my colleagues for this strong vote of confidence in my leadership. You know, I ran for city council not to be held in esteem, but to be held accountable. And so, that is what I am asking of you as my colleagues to help me to do, as I will be holding all of you accountable as well. And, you know, it's really a deeply emotional moment for me to land in this role. As many of you know, I worked in City Hall for two previous city council members who both held the position of vice president. And I'd like to just acknowledge Councilmember Elizabeth Glitten and former council member Robert Lilligren today. And I believe that this responsibility falls in line with the work that the 8th Ward has been doing for many, many, many years. And so, I'm deeply honored and really appreciate the opportunity to serve the council and the city and my ward, the 8th Ward, in this capacity. Thank you very much.
Members, we will move to the election of majority and minority leaders. We'll open the floor to nominations for the office of majority leader. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to nominate Councilmember Andrew Johnson for majority leader.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson, representing Ward 12, has been elected or has been nominated to the position of majority leader. Are there further nominations? Seeing no further nominations, the period is closed. For further nominations and the vote we've taken on a motion to elect Andrew Johnson, a council member representing Ward 12, to the office of majority leader, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion carries unanimously, and Councilmember Johnson has been elected majority leader. Councilmember Johnson, did you have comments?
Just wanted to thank everyone who's here today, especially my family, my colleagues, all the city staff. I look forward to working on behalf of our council over these next four years. I'm just so excited to get to work with all of you and to work on behalf of the people of Minneapolis. It's a great honor. Thank you.
Finally, we will open the floor to nominations for the minority leader. Are there nominations?
Mr. Chair, it was a tough and well-fought race, and I would like to nominate my friend, Councilmember Cam Gordon, to serve as the body's minority leader.
Motion's been made to elect Cam Gordon, a council member representing Ward 2, to the office of minority leader. Are there further nominations? And seeing none, we will immediately move to a vote on the election of our minority leader, Cam Gordon, from Ward 2. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion carries unanimously, and Councilmember Jenkins has been elected majority leader. Councilmember Johnson, did you have comments?
Just wanted to thank everyone who's here today, especially my family, my colleagues, all the city staff. I look forward to working on behalf of our council over these next four years. I'm just so excited to get to work with all of you and to work on behalf of the people of Minneapolis. It's a great honor. Thank you.
Finally, we will open the floor to nominations for the minority leader. Are there nominations?
Mr. Chair, it was a tough and well-fought race, and I would like to nominate my friend, Councilmember Cam Gordon, to serve as the body's minority leader.
Motion's been made to elect Cam Gordon, a council member representing Ward 2, to the office of minority leader. Are there further nominations? And seeing none, we will immediately move to a vote on the election of our minority leader, Cam Gordon, from Ward 2. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion also carries unanimously, and Councilmember Cam Gordon, from Ward 2, has been elected minority leader. Mr. Gordon, would you like to make comments?
Well, I would like to comment a little bit, and not necessarily so much about being minority leader, which is a great opportunity and privilege, and I really appreciate it. But I just, before we move into the next phase of the meeting, where we'll have the new president as chair, just to kind of acknowledge a little bit about the whole process. I think that as a new council, figuring out the organization and president and the vice president is one of the most difficult tasks. It's one that we are pretty much left on our own to figure out. We don't necessarily have staff there helping and working. There's no process. We don't have a big public hearing about it, and it's always a challenge. I can say always, I guess, since I've been here a few more terms than most of the rest of you. But it's always difficult, and it always takes energy and it takes work. And the process this time, I think, has been, it's very significant that we have a unanimous group together today, and it didn't just happen. It's more significant because it took work, and it took work of all of us. We had to get to know one another. We had to sit down and talk. We had to think about one another. We actually had to care about one another, about what are you interested in? What's going to make you feel like you can do your work here? What commitments do you have to your constituents? And there were times along the way, and always when this happens, it feels like there might be roadblocks. Is there going to be too much conflict? Are we really going to get along? And I think the fact that we have come to a conclusion that we have today demonstrates that we were all very interested in one another. More than that, we're very interested in making sure that we have a city that works well for the people of Minneapolis, and I just commend all of you for taking the time to do that. Having to go through that, I think, also makes us much better now to begin the work ahead of us. I know that we don't really know each other perfectly. We have a lot more work to do, but I think it bodes well that we've taken this effort to get to this point now, and I really appreciate it. And I really want to commend everybody who is interested in being president. I also want to commend Councilmember Bender for working hard to listen to everybody, to bring people together. I think we have a real potential here to have a collaborative, empowering kind of council leadership in Councilmember Bender and Councilmember Jenkins, and I look forward to being a part of that as your minority party leader.
Thank you. Now, councilmembers and guests, if I can ask for your indulgence, we'll take a very brief recess to reset the dais so that we can ask the president, vice president, majority leader, to assume their seats, and the clerks will reseat the remainder of the council members. So we'll take just a brief five-minute recess as we reseat the dais, and then we will return to conduct the business remaining on the agenda.
I did notice that one other council member did want to speak. Okay.
We'll take a brief recess and return in about five minutes. You'll just stay, you'll come right here.
I will call our meeting back to order. Thank you, as you all take your seats. I just want to express again so much to my colleagues how grateful I am for the incredible honor of being elected your president, and it's something I accept humbly. I did not speak this morning, and so I'm going to take a moment here and just give some remarks about this incredible moment in our city. I'm so excited to work with you, Madam Vice President. We're going to be a great team, and I am deeply grateful for your support.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And to Mayor Frye as well. We are all looking forward to working with you. Very exciting moment here. I also wanted to thank the clerk, Mr. Carl, and your staff. You have put in so much effort to making today an incredible experience for all of us and our families and friends, and we appreciate it. You've been working nights and weekends, and we literally couldn't do this without you. Thank you. And thanks for everyone who came here today, who's taking the time out of your day to be here with us and support us. Each one of us has a web of people behind us who give us the support we need to do this job, and you help us serve our city well, and we couldn't do it without you either. This year has been a mix of such highs and lows. I was looking out in the audience at my two little girls as we gave the Pledge of Allegiance, and it struck me that we have a president who isn't living the values that I'm teaching my children, that are not reflected in what we saw, the beautiful expression of our cultural communities of Minneapolis. We have a president who's literally attacking, attacking members of our community, who's stripping away hard-fought protections, and who's tweeting about nuclear war. That's our reality right now. But we are also in such an incredible time in our city, an historic moment. Our city is growing, and this year brought historic elections and the most diverse city council in our city's history. Together, we ran campaigns on a shared vision for an open and welcoming Minneapolis. Collectively, we have a vision for our city that centers race equity, that halts housing displacement, reforms our approach to public safety, and fights environmental injustice and climate change. Our common values, this shared vision for Minneapolis, is what makes this diverse and talented group of leaders so important right now. In a time where our federal and state government are either gridlocked or rolling back protections and decades of hard work, it is cities like Minneapolis that are leading the way, and it is all of you who are leading us forward. We got so much done together last term. We passed an Earn, Safe, and Sick Time Law and a $15 minimum wage to support working families in our city. We rolled out a Clean Energy Partnership, adopted green zones and a zero-waste plan. We established a small business office and removed barriers to economic development. We began the important work of changing our approach to public safety amidst the most painful times, the deaths of Jamar and Justine. And we brought, we began the hard work of transformative change necessary to support affordable housing as a right for all. Each of you will play a huge role in moving this work forward this term, and I'm proud of the structure that we put together, together. Councilmember Goodman, thank you for your leadership as the longest-serving member of this body. You have been an important mentor to me. You will be for all of us. Your leadership has touched so many issues over the decades you've been here, particularly on affordable housing, and we know you'll be an important support for all of us and an important source of leadership this term. Councilmembers Gordon and Reich, you are the only other members of this body who've served more than one term. So, thanks for that. We've always relied on your leadership on transportation and energy and the environment. A lot of it's behind the scenes. You've both stepped up in huge ways to lead this term, and we are very thankful. Councilmembers Worsami and Conno, Johnson and Palmasano, we came in together last term. It was a busy and tough term, and it was a time when the role of council member has been changing. But we're back, we're ready for more, and each of you has become such an important leader, not only in your own ward but in the city. You've stepped up to lead this term, and I can't wait to see your leadership blossom. Councilmembers Cunningham, Ellison, Fletcher, and Schrader, you are some of the hardest-working, most dedicated, and exciting group of leaders I've ever seen. I'm committed to supporting each of you in achieving the clear agendas you've set for yourself, and you are so strongly committed to your values. You're holding me and all of us accountable, and for that, I am so grateful that you are Councilmember Jenkins, this is such an historic moment in Minneapolis. Your leadership here and across the country is so important. It's an honor to have you as my partner, as council vice president. I look forward to championing your leadership as we tackle the country's largest race equity gaps. And finally, Mayor Frye, we're going to be a great team. You know, there's 13 of us here, and I don't even know if all of us are going to be able to keep up with you. We're going to try. You campaigned on a platform of affordable housing, of improving police and community relations, and economic inclusion. You will have my full support in passing the policies and budget investments needed to achieve these goals. So now that you know how much I admire each of you, I just want to talk really briefly about the term and all the work we have together with community. I'm proud that we put together a structure for this council and the votes that are coming, these sort of technical things, that support all of the leadership and work and experience of council members, and also set us up for future leadership and new ideas. We are governing during a time of growth, and here in Minneapolis, we have a group of elected leaders who are ready to embrace change. But, as we have each promised, we will demand that this growth and change in our city addresses race equity and continues the process of dismantling racial oppression. We are ready to work with each of you, each of our neighborhoods, to shape our city's future so that it does not leave anyone behind, so that health and opportunity are supported in every single Minneapolis neighborhood. The work ahead is no easy task. I'm the successor to the longest-serving city council president in our city's history. There are big shoes to fill, and I want our community to know, to anyone who worked with Council President Johnson over the past 12 years, my door is open to the business community, to neighborhood leaders, community advocates, elected officials, and residents of Minneapolis. We all need to work together to bring about this change that our city wants to see. And to anyone who didn't even know we have a council president, there's a lot of people, I think, to many people who are just ready to get involved in local government for the first time, my door is open to you too. Together, we will create more ways for people to shape our work. Voter turnout was up over 30% this election. There are so many people getting involved, and everyone who got involved in a campaign, we need you more now. We need you to hold us accountable and to help us govern with integrity. We are going to get creative about making sure all of your voices are heard. This is your government. We work for you. You inspire us, you motivate us, you support us, and you hold us accountable. When I spoke to each of my colleagues, to each of you about what kind of leadership you wanted to see this term, you said loud and clear that you want this body of elected leaders to be unified, and you have my commitment to do everything I can to keep us moving forward in alignment toward our shared goals. But let's be clear, unity doesn't mean we will always agree. With so many big issues facing our city, with each of us representing unique wards and communities, we are almost certainly going to disagree sometimes, and that's okay. That's part of democracy. In fact, it is the core of democracy. This challenging time demands that we not sweep debate under the rug, but embrace it. It demands that we create space for each other and community voices to dream, debate, and bring the best ideas forward. Today's meeting is about setting up the inner workings of the council, and that is important. But from today forward, our work will demand that we partner with each of you in our community. To reach all of our goals, we have to harness the talents and energy of our business community, our nonprofit and civic organizations, our advocacy community, and we have to make sure that every person who wants to get involved in shaping the future of this city is invited to have a voice. As each of us returning councilmembers knows, this is a tough job. My commitment to each of you is to have your back in your toughest moments and to shine a light on your best moments. I can't wait to see all that we are able to do together this term. Thank you again so very much. So, colleagues, we will now proceed to the new business on our agenda. I've asked the clerk to prepare a packet of the draft paperwork for each of these items, which was emailed around and you have at your desks. Each of these items is numbered to correspond to the agenda to help facilitate our action, and there are seven items today under new business. They're numbered in our packets, 1 through 7, and then there will be three ordinance introductions that are listed at the end authored by the respective committee chairs. Item number one under new business is the standing committees and membership of the Minneapolis City Council. This is a resolution establishing the standing committees, including the membership, leadership, quorums, and dates of regular meetings. I'm proposing a total of 12 standing committees, and this would include a subcommittee of the committee of the whole focused on race equity, the Race Equity Subcommittee of the Committee of the Whole. The proposed committee system retains most of our longstanding committees, but introduces a few changes that, after talking with all of you, I think will help us concentrate our work and focus our attention on the critical issues that we've all been talking about today. So with that, I will move the resolution establishing the standing committees and membership of the Minneapolis City Council. I'll pause and see if there's any questions or any discussion on this item. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a quick moment to speak to the process in which we got to this place of the standing committees and the membership, and just really speak to Councilmember Bender's leadership in this whole process. So, she has shown leadership that has sown the seeds of collaboration rather than discord, and with that, that's going to shift the culture not only within Minneapolis City Hall but throughout the entire city government. She operates in ways with integrity in ways that we rarely see from people who have such high positions of power. One of the ways that I define progressive is the pragmatic and thoughtful approach to working across differences, and I can say that since the eight weeks since the election that that has really been where Councilmember Bender has shined, shown, was really being able to show that we can all come together and be able to build power across differences. I believe to dismantle historic and present harms, that the process matters as much, if not more, than the end product itself, and that is really where I saw such great leadership. I, historically, knew council members and younger council members would not have much of a voice in the process of developing the council structure, and I have been treated with respect as a peer. I have been, had an equal voice in the collaborative decision-making, and have been heard as a representing voice for a marginalized community. She has a quiet leadership that's underappreciated, which is about building bridges and building us up as individual council members who have work to do on our local, on the local level in our communities. I look forward to working with her and holding her accountable, and thank you for the time.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
There are 13 ayes.
That resolution is adopted. The next item is New Business Item Number Two, Executive Committee Membership. This item is a resolution designating those councilmembers who will serve on the executive committee. The executive committee is an independent body created under the city charter, which unites the mayor and council to address enterprise governance. The charter dictates that the mayor is the chair and the president is the vice chair. It also reserves a seat for the minority leader. I am proposing to add the vice president, Councilmember Jenkins, and Majority Leader, Councilmember Johnson, as the other members of this committee. Are there any questions or discussion from councilmembers? Seeing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
The resolution is adopted. That moves us to New Business Item Number Three, the Audit Committee Membership. This is a resolution designating councilmembers to serve on the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee is an independent body responsible for the city's internal audit function, including the appointment and supervision of the city auditor. The Ways and Means Chair is automatically a member of the Audit Committee. I am proposing to add Councilmember Palmasano, who is chair of our Budget Committee, as well as Councilmember Schrader, as the other councilmember. Are there any questions from councilmembers on the motion or discussion? Seeing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion is adopted. New Business Item Number Four is adoption of the 2018 calendar of the regular meetings of the City Council and its standing committees, as well as the independent audit and executive committees. A draft of the calendar is included in your packets, and it reflects all of the observed holidays and significant dates, as well as our ward work weeks. Once adopted, we will ask the city clerk to publish and post the calendar to make periodic updates to reflect the needs of the council. Any questions or discussion from councilmembers on the motion? Seeing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion is adopted. New Business Item Number Four is adoption of the 2018 calendar of the regular meetings of the City Council and its standing committees, as well as the independent audit and executive committees. A draft of the calendar is included in your packets, and it reflects all of the observed holidays and significant dates, as well as our ward work weeks. Once adopted, we will ask the city clerk to publish and post the calendar to make periodic updates to reflect the needs of the council. Any questions or discussion from councilmembers on the motion? Seeing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That is adopted. New Business Item Number Seven is Councilmember Appointments. This is our last item of New Business, and it appoints councilmembers to a number of organizations, boards, and commissions, and other groups as representatives of the city of Minneapolis. So this resolution provides those assignments, but we also know that many of you serve on boards and commissions that may be specific to your wards, and this may not be a full and complete list of all of the appointments that will take place throughout our term. So know that this is a living document and can always be updated with your commitments or anything we may have missed in this sort of long list of appointments. Are there any questions or discussion from councilmembers? Seeing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That motion is adopted. So now, we are moving on to the introduction and referral calendar portion of our agenda. We have a series of ordinance introductions to be referred to their proper committees. These are routine actions included in every organizational meeting as means of expediting the noticing and referral of these matters during the coming term. The introduction essentially opens these chapters to routine recurring actions. In your packets are three motions that accomplish these referrals, authored respectively by Councilmember Worsami for the Ways and Means Committee, Councilmember Reich for the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and Councilmember Schrader for the Zoning and Planning Committee. I would like to take one voice vote on all three motions, so I'll ask if there are any questions on any of the three referrals. And seeing none, I will call for a vote on all of the motions. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.